All right, it is five o'clock on Monday the 13th. No, the 14th, Tuesday the 14th. I'd like to be on spring break, as probably all of you would, but since we're not on the beach or not on the ski slopes, we will call a meeting to order. And do we have someone to speak in public comments?
Yes, Ms. Mindy Marsh.
There she is. If you'll come to the microphone. What is your name and address?
My name is Mindy Marsh. I live at 712 Harper Road. And my house is right at the intersection of Harper and Holdsworth. I live on the property with my family. My grandmother lived there before me, and then when she passed, my parents started living there. So my family has been here since the mid-'80s, mid to late-'80s. But I just recently moved here last July. And my parents have noticed that, especially since Holdsworth was built, that the traffic in that area has, I mean, increased exponentially. And now it's so loud at our house, like, we cannot stand outside and have a conversation. We have to wait for whatever, you know, big 18-wheeler or motorcycle or souped-up car that's, you know, gunning it down the road in order for us to finish our conversation. So we want to build a fence to, right, help block off the noise, but the city council, what I learned recently, instituted this 30-inch height requirement on fences. So for us, and I believe for everybody that lives on Harper Road, that that requirement is not reasonable and provides an undue burden on the property owners because now we have to go through the variance process, right, and pay a $265 fee, which I'm like, why $265? Like, that just seems like a lot, just for us to be able to quietly and peacefully enjoy our own property that we've had for decades, right? And, you know, the fence that we... So there are already, I think my parents counted, you know, 20 to 26 fences that are six feet in height on that road. And what we want to build is, on the front property line, which faces Harper Road, we want to put just a four-foot fence made out of limestone blocks, so it'll be really pretty. And then on the side with our neighbors, where we would put a six-foot fence in order to help block out that noise. But in... And that's just for us, but in general, I think that that 30-inch height requirement is way too low. I think you guys should, you know, maybe look at the city as a whole and, you know, consider where putting in exceptions to that rule makes sense in general. Because if everybody, you know, who lives on Harper Road has to do this variance, it's a tedious process, and with the $265 fee, you know, may not be feasible for some people. So that's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. First, on our workshop agenda is Playhouse 2000. Is there any staff member with anything, EA?
Mr. Jeffrey Brown is here from P2K to provide their annual update to council.
Very good. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you very much. Thanks for having me in, and thanks for giving me some time to visit with you about the state of the company. We're glad to be able to share with you some information about where we've been and where we're going. So let's just dive into that. Okay. I bet I have to hold it. There it goes. We're going to start with the most important thing that's been on our horizon for the last couple of years, surviving the COVID crisis. Our very first necessity for canceling a program was in March of 2020. In 2020, following that first cancellation, we ultimately canceled 35 separate events, which covered 64 workdays, audience public days. We estimated a loss of 21,000 visits in 2020 alone and about $230,000 in ticket sales. Of course, those are estimates because we can't count people who didn't show up. But that's what we estimate happened to us in 2020. In 2021, there were 55 fewer events and 19,000 fewer tickets sold than in 2019. So that's a direct comparison between a couple of years that were... 2019 was mostly normal. So those things led to our taking some pretty significant steps to help us weather having the doors closed for so long. We hit our individual fundraising very, very hard. We raised more than $85,000 from 150 different individual donors, private donors, and significant support from local foundations, including the Callow Foundation, the Puget Foundation, the Peterson Foundation, the Community Foundation, and several others. The biggest money that we were able to use to tide us over came from government sources. We were very successful in applying for payroll protection program grants, two grants total of $82,500. We also achieved an economic disaster impact loan of $55,000. We're currently in repayment on that. We also were eligible for the shuttered venue operators grant, the SVOG grant. That was $87,000, which we received in 2020. And then we were also eligible for a grant from the Texas Commission on the Arts, which funding came through the National Endowment for the Arts. So with all those things together, we were able to keep our operation stable. And because we had reduced activity, we had reduced expenses as well. So when we took out programs, although they weren't making us any money, they also didn't cost us any money. That was about an $82,000 reduction in 2020. And keeping the electricity turned off most of the time and some of those kinds of things allowed us to save about $60,000 in operating expenses. The most important thing that I want to relate to you is that we had no curtailment of personnel during that entire period. All of our permanent staff, which is both full-time and part-time, were retained at their current level of employment. And even most of our hourly workers continued to work for us on an hourly basis. They were just doing things that were not program-related. We undertook several fairly significant maintenance program, maintenance activities. We replaced the fence. We revamped the green room and dressing rooms in the Callow Theater. We put in some new carpet. We did some remediation of water damage, some of those kinds of things. So over the course of our two years, we kept even our hourly workers active, and we feel like productive. So those were some of the uses specifically for the PPP money. In general, though, we were able to finish all of that, having set aside some money. At the beginning of 2022, we had about $250,000 in available operating cash, which is significantly more than we normally carry. And we had $140,000 set aside in board-designated savings, the money that is least accessible, least liquid, that the board will have to approve before it gets spent. In 2022, we had total income of $617,000. Of that, 56% was earned income. That's a fairly strong earned income ratio for a performing arts center. Somewhere between 50% and 60% is the industry norm of earning money through ticket sales and rentals and tuition. That's money that people pay us in order to take advantage of our programming. 44% comes from unearned and contributed income. Last year, that was about $273,000. Our total expenses for the year were $688,000. Of that, 34% was for personnel, 26% for facilities and operations, including things like insurance. And then 35% was spent on programming specifically. So we finished the year with negative net income of about $71,000. That actually is slightly more, not just slightly, it's about twice as much negative net income than we had projected for that period. But it was planned that we would have negative net income, both last year and in our current year. And it was fully funded by our cash reserve. This doesn't include some non-operating expenses. About $30,000 in expenses related to things that were non-programmatic and non-operating. They specifically relate to a replacement of our online box office system, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, and some upgrades to facilities that were not related to our programming. So if that's sufficient, I'll leave that alone for right now. All of that means that we finished 2022 with about $184,000 in available operating cash and $132,000 in board-designated savings. Pretty strong position for us in terms of our annual balance sheet, and we felt confident moving into 2023. The 2023 budget, and by the way, I'm going to mention, I'm trying really hard not to take too much of your time, at the same time, I don't want to go past something that you'd like to know more about. So please stop me if I error in either direction.
Can I ask a question on the previous slide? When you showed the numbers there about what the expenses you had, have you been seeing that that number has been slowly decreasing of what you started your year out with compared to what you ended with? And your negative net income, have you seen that as a trend of just going down?
We have had negative income, negative net income in 1920, '21, and '22. All of it, it's, that's, I'm sorry, that's not the case. Programatically, that is true. But because we had a significant influx of, effectively, government support, the cash on hand was funding our negative income. And we're looking forward to being back into a positive, a positive net revenue position, hopefully by the end of 2023.
Okay. And that was going to be my next question. Were you usually before end of the positive net, or were you almost break even?
No, we, well, break even is what we aim for, honestly. We have been either on the positive side of revenue or within $1,000 of break even for nine straight years, starting in 2012.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So when you're talking about two sounding more like capital expenses, if you were to break, back those out, would you, where would you have ended with income and expense? You said those were attributing to the loss, is that?
Yeah. Well, the total loss for '21, I'm sorry, for '22, the total negative was about $100,000.
Okay. So you did already take those out.
Yeah, that's reflected in that final number that I gave you. I'm no longer seeing my screen, so I'm not sure where we are exactly. There we are. So in the current position, there it is. In our current budget, then, we have set ourselves a predicted operational income goal of about $738,000. 55% of that, we project to come from earned income, about $407,000. 29% from public support, 13% from our city agreement. And all of those things together are offset by our expenses projected to be $770,000. Once again, very similar breakouts in terms of percentage, about 36% on personnel, 28% on operations, and 35% on programming. We project negative net income in the current year as well, about $30,000. Once again, that is fully funded by operations. And it's actually indicated why we're approaching this budget, being, including negative net income, is part of our strategic plan, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, which we wanted to leverage the fact that we moved ahead in terms of cash on hand while we were closed so that once we got back open, we didn't have to, we didn't have to worry about not losing money while we tried to get back out in front of people. So we did purposely program both last year and the current year to be lost leaders, if you will. We do project to finish 2023 with about $153,000 in available cash and that $132,000 in board-designated savings. In terms of our balance sheet, that is still twice as much cash on hand as we would have had at the end of 2018, if that's an indication of operations. We are happy to be celebrating two anniversaries in 2023. Playhouse 2000 is having our 25th anniversary season in 2023. We were founded in 1998 by Doug and Susan Ballantyne and Kit Worline. Their first production was a show called "The Miracle Worker", which was in November of 1998, out at the Hill Country Youth Ranch. And they soon moved to a couple of different places, followed by Murda Street, followed by the VK Garage, followed by the Callow Theater. We're very excited to be having our 25th anniversary and looking forward to celebrating that all year long. The Callow Theater's 20th anniversary is coming right up. 20 years ago, on March 27th of 2003, the San Antonio Symphony was in town to open the Callow Theater. More than 800 guests were there that night. Tickets cost between $30 and $100, which I'm sure 20 years ago was a lot of money. We're not quite there for single tickets yet. $100 apiece would be a lot for us. But that event was remarkable in its press coverage. I've gone back through the clippings now for quite a while, looking forward to this 20th anniversary. And it was recognized all across the state.
What are you doing for your 20th anniversary at the Callow?
I'm just talking about, it's 20, it's not '25. So other than letting people know we're having it, there's not a big celebration planned. 20 years has gone by is kind of where we are. Playhouse 2000's 25th anniversary season, we are announcing two brand-new concepts for production in 2023. One of them is called Playhouse Now. It is designed to present, at least once a year, a modern play from the modern repertoire with an eye toward developing an audience that's a little bit more adventurous, perhaps, than what we normally play to. It's only one time a year. We're not going overboard with it here, but we do. And we are going to segregate it from our main season to let people know that it's something that, if they are looking for theater that's coming from the edges, that's what we're, that's what we want to provide with that particular set. And then we're also launching a program called the VK Garage Dinner Theater, which you can look forward to in October. We're going to be inviting people in to have dinner and then see a show. It's an interactive murder mystery called "Bedding on Bloodshed." You don't have to buy dinner to see the show, but if you want to, you can have dinner and then enjoy the show and then have the first act and then vote on who did it, and then come back after dessert, and we'll tell you the answer. So that's going to be a very exciting thing that happens coming up in October. Our regular season is five plays and musicals. We've completed one of them already. We just finished a very unique musical, Rodgers and Hammerstein's "Me and Juliet", which opened in the Callow Theater last month. And then it will also include the 11th year of Shakespeare in the Park, which is a partnership with Parks and Recreation. And it will be the third year of partnership with Tybee High School, in which Tybee High School tech theater students spend the final six weeks of their year. Their class time is spent in our facility, where they are able to take advantage of some aspects of theater tech that they don't have access to in their space, fly lofts, lighting boards, kinds of things that they don't have. And then that culminates in their participation in Shakespeare in the Park in June. This year, we're doing Richard III, which is sponsored by the Community Foundation, and we're really looking forward to it. As we celebrate the 20th anniversary of the Callow Theater, we are introducing a brand-new logo mark for the, for the entire complex. We haven't had one before. All the spaces had their own marks. So we have introduced an overall mark that we use fairly sparingly, pardon me. This is our new mark, the Kathleen C. Callow City Center for Performing Arts. The concentric Cs have been arranged in a way that is reminiscent somewhat of an amphitheater or some kind of theater seating. The green and the blue colors are taken directly from the original Callow Theater logo. So we feel like it grabs some of that tradition and gives us a mark that we can use as we move forward as well. We revamped and completely rebuilt our entire website. And you can see all of, all of our programming in a single space now, which wasn't the case before. The calloperformingarts.com website covers everything that happens on the entire campus. We've also, you heard me mention that one of our upgrades was a change in our box office system. The sequence of events was that we had a box office system that some, that most people were fairly comfortable with. That system was purchased by a larger ticket broker. That broker's experience for our audience in particular was very uncomfortable. People didn't like going online to buy tickets with our, with that particular service. And we were having some trouble with reporting. Changing a ticket service for an organization that sells 50,000 tickets a year is a pretty big task. It took us nine months to do the changeover, and it was not inexpensive. Ultimately, it will save us money and provide our clients with a better online experience. And if you've gone online to buy tickets with us ever before or recently, hopefully both, you'll have noticed a difference, I think. We're very, very pleased with Pay for Manager, which is our new platform. We are expecting some coverage in local newspapers. And if you happen to get to Comanche Trace Magazine, they should be running the article about the 20th anniversary sometime this month. I'm expecting this week for some of the local newspapers to cover that as well. In our 20th anniversary year of the, of the Callow Theater, we will once again have a six-show Callow Performances series, which is sponsored by our friends at Century 21 The Hills Realty. We're finishing up the '22-'23 series in March, no, sorry, in April, with a group out of Houston called Wind Saint, which will be partnering with our Young People's Performances series and performing at Tybee High School. We're excited about taking them out there. We also have that four-event Young People's Performances series, which will see in the neighborhood of 6,000 children this year from five different school districts in three counties. The lion's share of those come from KISD, but we also bus in kids from Vandera and Fredericksburg and Centerpoint and Hunt and Comfort. And there's some more. And they come 1,600 at a time. We do two shows a day. The events in this year's series have included a group out of London called the 2D 3D Company. They did ugly duckling for kindergartners. The next, the next show is out of Ireland. It's Danny Carmo's Mathematical Magic... I don't know the whole title. Mathematical Mysteries is what it is. He combines magic and storytelling with learning the basics of mathematics for third through fifth graders. It's an amazing show. If you get a chance, I'll invite you to come see it. The Symphony of the Hills, of course, will be back. The Hill Country Youth Orchestra. The Shriners University is performing at our space again. And of course, we have multiple events. We're on the verge of announcing six events for the summer. So you can look forward to some interesting things coming up there. And of course, a lot of community support, including voting, which starts next week, I think. Is that right? No, next month.
Next month.
Next month. Not next week. No, it wouldn't be next week. We are very excited that the board, after a year's worth of work, approved a strategic plan for years '23 through '27. It was adopted in January. We have five main objectives for our next five years. The first in order of priority is we want to strengthen the stability of the corporation. We want to get back to the place where we're not spending more money than we take in, in a given year. The second is we want to increase our impact on our community, both social and economic. The third is we want to rebuild and enhance that economic value to the community. The fourth, we want to maintain appropriate staff to successfully achieve our goals. Staffing is a very important part of what we do. We're very proud of the fact that of our four main staff members, all of them have been with us a minimum of eight years consecutively. And we will maintain our facilities. Those are our five main objectives for the next five years. Our most significant goals are these. We want to return to revenue-positive operations. That's the first step for us. We have to leverage our current surplus to make sure that people know that we're here and that they can feel comfortable coming back and getting back to seeing the things that they love. And it's also really important that we continue to program things that are of general, significantly general, generally significant interest. We're looking for things that will bring a large crowd to the theater, and those things are not inexpensive, which is why we have to leverage some of those cash on hand figures in order to keep moving forward. We do, of course, want to maintain a healthy cash reserve, which we're trying, which we are doing. A big step for us, and actually, I just got some news yesterday that makes this possible. We want to reestablish our programming for youth. Just before the pandemic hit, we, we had a staff transition. Our Director of Youth Programming left the company, and before we could replace her, COVID hit and everything was put on hold. We just yesterday received notice of a grant from the Coats Foundation that will fund a Director of Youth Programming for the first three years that we have him or her with us. We yesterday launched our job search for a Director of Youth Programming. If you happen to know anybody who's interested, let me know. So that launch has, has been undertaken. We want to focus our efforts to drive visitors to Kerrville. That has always been a major focus for us. We have a target of having no fewer than 60% of our audience in a given year have a zip code outside of 78028 or 29. Right now, we had been very successful at hitting that target consistently. Currently, we're running between 30% and 40% from outside of town. I believe we'll get back to 50% in the current year. And the hope is that we'll move back into that 60% figure in the following year or thereafter. That's going to require that we expand the reach and effectiveness of our marketing efforts. We, we are diligently researching what the effective marketing efforts would look like. As you know, it's difficult to know exactly how to get in front of people and how to know for sure that they're responding to what you put in front of them. But those are some things that we're looking very hard at. And we want to focus on facility maintenance. In particular, we want to complete the job, the plans for replacing infrastructure that are in place now. We know that the city council and the city staff are looking at ways to replace, I think, the roof and the HVAC systems at the Callow Theater. I want to emphasize to you how necessary that task is. We are coming back up into the hot season, and I cannot guarantee you that the system is, is going to work all summer long. So that is something that's, that weighs heavy on us. That is one of our major goals. And then we also want to make sure that we have developed a plan for at least knowing what our next targets are. And we have a significant list right now of places that we know we want to focus our attention in terms of maintenance. Some of it we will be undertaking, and some of it we'll, we'll talk to you about how to move forward with. And I believe that takes care of what I came here to talk to you about, but it may not answer all of your questions. And I'm happy to try to do that if you have some more.
I have, I have a couple of questions. You know, on the hot funds that you get from, from the hot tax, this year's budget allocation was $100,000? Hot tax funds, that is part of your budget?
The management, the management agreement is funded by hot tax?
That's correct.
Okay. So is that, is that some, has that been a consistent number? Or is that, is, how long have we been funding at that level? Or?
That agreement was signed in 2019. And that $100,000 figure was laid out then. We certainly would enjoy an opportunity to...
Ask for more?
To lobby for that to continue to increase, yes.
I was going to say, if we're paying you the same amount, but your expenses are going up, then we might want to consider what that looks like as, as adjustments.
We've moved from 14% of our budget down to about 12% of our budget in 2023. And that, that $100,000 represents that.
Okay. Just for forward thinking on...
I appreciate it.
Jeff, you'd mentioned one of the, I think there were five grants that you had had early on. And you said something about paying one of those back.
Yes. The EIDL, the Economic Impact Disaster Loan, is an actual loan from the Small Business Administration. We effectively, I compare it to a mortgage. It was $55,000. We're paying it back $325 a month for 30 years.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
And on the repairs, the HVAC in the roof, I assume staff has been working with you on that? What's, what's the status on that right now?
We, as you recall, we engage with a professional HVAC firm, a design firm, to evaluate that infrastructure. They've come back to us with some of their thoughts on what replacement... They've come back to us with some of their thoughts on what replacement would look like. And so we're trying to develop a funding strategy to bring forth to the community and see if we can fund that going forward. It's a it's a large infrastructure challenge. There's no doubt about that.
Are we looking, is it hopeful that we'll get the HVAC portion of it done by this year? Are we looking at it?
No, because of the nature of HVAC replacement, as you may recall from the recent library and other supply issues challenges that we've had, it is something that probably going to have to ensue sometime in the next 12 to 18 months. But there's a long lead time on that order. And obviously, we want to also be cognizant of the operational challenges that that will pose because it's not like you can just replace it one day.
Yeah.
And so we're we're working with both P2K staff as well as those professionals in timing some of that.
We.
Budget amendment? That has anything to do with this or is this all going to be next year's budgeted item?
Right now, it is an unfunded infrastructure replacement. So we are searching for sources for that.
So what were you going to say, sir?
I was just saying, we we have, I have an 18 to 24 month planning window. And so the idea that we might need to go dark for even a month is difficult. Knowing about it in advance is helpful. But right now, we're continuing to operate as if that's not on the plan. The scary part of that is that it might come along without my planning for it.
Would would this qualify for maybe some EIC funding? I mean, it's just a question.
Certainly could. Be a council decision on whether they, you request for staff to to move forward with putting an EIC application together.
Okay, yeah. Better be proactive than reactive.
Now that we know what that number looks like.
Yeah, what's that number? Isn't it around 2 million?
Probably closer to about three and a half with the roof and the HVAC replacement.
Are we looking, would we look at doing both those around the same time or priorities one over the other?
No, because of the integration of those two systems, we would recommend that they happen simultaneously. However, it could potentially be broken up into some phasing as it is a tiered roof structure on different pieces. And so we do have, we're working through some prioritization of kind of a phased approach.
Mayor, I have a comment or two. You may not realize this, but I was a founding board member of this company. And to see that y'all survived through COVID and kept your staff and are planning getting people to return to the theater is exciting.
Thank you.
When the Ballantines and Kit Worline and I and a few others met at Pampeles many years ago, y'all have taken that little dream and made a great thing out of us. I'm very, very proud of what you've done.
Thanks.
For what you've done for our community. I appreciate it.
You're very kind. Thank you.
And I, the fact that you've kept your staff that long and kept them through COVID, I that's admirable, Jeffrey.
Thank you.
And I'm excited about some of your new programming. I think your dinner theater is is going to be a very welcome and exciting addition.
Good, thank you. I have a kind of a, we're actually just short of being able to publicly distribute our five-year plan, but I have just a a couple of copies of the prototype. If anybody would like to spend a few minutes reading 30 pages of our five-year plan.
Thank you and congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't feel like you have to take this. Thank you. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Good job, and thanks for the report.
There it is.
And you brought some people with you, didn't you?
I have a couple of my board members here visiting, listening in. Lynn Niles is our Secretary of Treasurer. Ken Harris is on our Board of Directors for the last several years. I appreciate them being here to give me the moral support.
Thank you for all you do, too. I remember a lot of board meetings, so good, good work.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, we are ready to change directions here and talk about our zoning code amendment, including fences. Drew?
Martin, can you bring that one up? There we go. So I wanted to bring this back. It's been a while since we have talked about it. Zoning code update and building code update, both as they tie together. Zoning code, of course, we, the major update was 2019. That's where we included some new fencing requirements that we hadn't previously had. And then building code update in 2021 with the adoption of the current codes added a permitting requirement, more or less to help work with citizens on what those fence requirements were. We were seeing quite a few fences built that didn't meet the requirements because we did not have a permitting process.
Drew, just just to talk about fences not having a problem, like what what can that cause as far as issues relate, what what issues? I don't want, and I don't want anyone in the public to think that that things are just being put in place to charge fees. And I mean, there there was some impetus to this. And that doesn't mean it's perfect, but there, can you speak to some of the things that were going on?
Yes, through both the Kerrville 2050 Plan and 2018, and then the rewrite of the zoning code. Got a lot of community feedback about more or less complaints of six, seven, eight-foot fences in people's front yards, really enclosing and blocking line of sight down the block in the neighborhood, visibility issues for neighbors trying to back out of their driveway. And just that kind of tucked-in look of a neighborhood versus or of a single home versus the neighborhood look. So we carried that into the zoning code to restrict the height of fences in the front yard from the front of the house to the front property line. Obviously, the side yards, backyards can be fenced in as per typical, but didn't want to see solid six-foot fences totally enclosing people's front yards or driveways.
Can I interrupt? We've had a citizen addresses tonight with, which sounds like a very valid concern. She's also noted that in her neighborhood, there are a lot of fences in in front.
Yes.
Are there any ideas if we could have regions where where those fences could be allowed without variance? Has that even been discussed?
It has not. We do have some amendments that partially address.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but her her points were well made.
Yes.
I drive down, as I gun my engine down Harper Road, I tend to look for those places that don't have a fence. Interrupt it. No, but the truth is, there should be like, we should at least discuss an overlay system on streets that have high-traffic, high-traffic volumes.
We can look that.
It's a lot different than my streets, a one-block street, you know? And and I'm probably the loudest vehicle on the street. So I think I think it, one solution may not fit the entire community.
Right. We do have a solution to try to amend what we put in 2019, and I'll go through some of that.
Thank you.
Just to elaborate to you on the question that you had. Some of the issues, as you recall, the council was faced in the 2021 timeframe with the implementation of the fence permit process is we were seeing contractors that were building fences across their property line or outside of existing property lines because there wasn't a tie-off to the survey process and then also in the public's right-of-way. And so both of those prompted council to want to implement a permutation process simply to oversee, make sure those fences were being built in the appropriate place and on private property.
But as you are aware, not all of us were participating in that discussion. I wasn't on council.
That's correct.
Right, and that was just to speak to why it started in the first place, to give some, to give some back backstory to why this is where we are today.
Picking this conversation up today, really from two years ago. That's right.
And that's good. The, we had talked about the fee at that time. This seem is, am I premature to talk about fees? I thought we had set that fee at much less than $260.
Yes, the the actual, the permit fee.
Wait for.
Council waived it for one year so that we could help educate the public. We actually got a lot of good feedback from that. Once we passed passed that year, we started requiring that fee. Top of my head, it's, I believe the fence permit is less than $100 for the actual permit fee.
So what was the 265?
That is for a zoning variance. So that's a, that's a public hearing process. It's much more than just a building permit.
Like the SDRs.
Right. So the building permit does require a site plan and identification of what materials and where you're putting the fence so that we can make sure it is within the property line and within those height restrictions in the front yard.
I want to be, I want to be careful when we talk about the, what a fence actually means because the ordinance that was put in place wasn't just for fences in the front yard. It was for fences anywhere on the property on any side.
Correct.
Right, okay. So today, are we looking at changing that just on the front part or?
I'll go through that.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure the ordinance was for fencing all around the property.
The fence permit requirement is for any fence.
Right.
But specific to the front yard fence is what the amendments. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed early 2022. Just hadn't prioritized that to bring it up. We had some bigger, bigger rocks to handle before we brought it back to council. So the front yard requirement, and Councilmember Garcia, just as you mentioned, in the front yard, you are allowed to put up an ornamental fence of up to six feet tall. Ornamental fence in the fence industry is designed or defined as more or less wrought iron style fencing like you see here. We did not define that in our ordinance. So that was where we started with the Planning Commission was, how do we better define this so that everyone knows this was the expectation? Through that discussion and through several of the permits that we received over the last two years, we had more requests for non-wrought iron style fences, fences similar to these, whether it be kind of a hog pile, hog panel or a wire mesh, wire panel and post, some post and rail like you see on the bottom left. And we did have a handful of ornamental style fences that were installed. Several permits that have requested this style fence, we basically just put on hold, knowing that this was eventually coming to council. Worked with those customers.
You want it to be considered an ornamental fence is what.
Well, we may just remove the ornamental designation. The initial discussion was, again, we don't want to impact visibility along the block or for driveways. So any of these style fences, even including chain link, do allow that visibility.
Because they're open enough.
And so the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended inclusion of these fences. From a code writing standpoint, I think it would be difficult to include these and exclude chain link because there are other.
Right.
Wire mesh materials that resemble chain link in some form or fashion. So to to be inclusive of all of those that are not causing a visual obstruction was the goal of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Additionally, the code as currently written doesn't specifically state that you can combine solid and non-solid materials. So we want to clarify that as well because don't see any issue with a solid brick or rock base up to 30 inches or there is no visual obstruction and some kind of see-through panel above that.
But some of those examples go above that, so are those not going to be allowed?
Yeah, some of those are more than eight or six, seven, eight feet. The other question that has come up recently is the columns. A lot of people would prefer to have a brick column rather than just a steel column. Do we feel that that is visually obstructive or not? Because we would need to include that.
What is the recommendation?
The Planning Commission did not discuss the brick columns. So they looked at more of the top right picture. A brick base with some kind of see-through panel, any variety of a wire mesh or a wire panel. And of course, the wrought iron is still still within that same vein. So kind of the goals that we were looking at was to amend the code to allow those non-visually obstructing fence materials. To move, and this is much more to Ms. Marsh's discussion, to move the requirement from the front wall of the building to the zoning district front setback line. So like Harper Road, most of those houses are sitting back 50, 60, some of them even 100 feet off the property line. The front yard is then defined by the front of the house to the front property line. However, you could build a garage or a shed 25 feet off the front property line in that single-family zoning district. So we're actually moving that requirement to go to a more of a see-through panel from the front setback line forward. Anything from that front setback line to the back of the property could be allowed a solid fence. And so in some cases, that would answer the question of.
Wait, say that again?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's like either or, is what you're saying then?
No, sorry, from the front setback line. So R1 is 25 feet from the front property line.
Right.
Any fence at that line or back could be a solid fence.
Okay, for purposes of sound, being a sound barrier.
From 25 feet forward would have to be one of these style fences.
That makes sense.
That's 25 feet on 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 what's on what's on all residential zones?
It would be R1. R2 would be 15 feet.
You're you're confident that those setbacks will not, will not obstruct, thank you, obstruct views? Like if you're 15 feet and you're on a on a side lot and you're 15 feet back, you don't think there's not an obstruction for traffic and things like that?
At that distance, we allow any structure to be built. So it'd be comparable to an addition to the home or an accessory building.
Yeah.
Okay.
We do not have a clear definition of screening fence, which is more of your commercial application where it's required between commercial and residential. And then additionally, the building code, we do need some clarification on repairs. Typically, building code repairs over 50% of the area to be repaired, and you must bring it up to current code. Similarly, we're suggesting that if you're repairing more than 50% of the fence, you're required to get a permit and update to the current code.
But Drew, if you're just replacing a backyard fence, that's all you're doing. You've got one and all you're going to do is put another one, just take out the old, put in the new. Why do we need a permit for that?
Back to making sure that we're within the property lines so we don't have someone on a corner lot moving their fence from the property line to the back of curb and actually encroaching in the public right-of-way.
We see a lot of disputes between neighbors on fence construction and where those are being constructed at.
Yeah.
And without without a survey being presented, it's a, it's an ongoing challenge.
It just, I don't know, it just, and I understand, so, yes.
The point that the the citizen made earlier, is there any consideration for sound, awful sound? And here's why. I mean, not only Harper, but Lemus Street, for instance, just as loud.
Right.
And parts of Broadway, parts of Memorial, parts of water. There are places, and Sidney Baker, of course, there are places where some type of sound abatement, even if it's, even if it's, even if the sound abatement doesn't, isn't as effective as people would hope, might be something to consider, an overlay on heavily trafficked streets.
We could look that as an overlay. That's not something we've considered before, but certainly can.
I know that wasn't part of the consideration earlier, but I understand, I feel for this family because my my grandmother lived on Lemus for a while. And she was fortunate that she could take out her hearing aids, you know? Because she couldn't sleep. It's loud, especially where emergency traffic goes through, too.
So a little more detail. Again, wanted, for the purpose of fencing, define that front yard as just the setback area, not from the structure to the front property line. Same thing, 30 inches solid, not exceeding 72 inches for any portion that's see-through, measured from the ground. They may be a combination of materials, solid and see-through as long as we're not exceeding 30 inches for the solid sections. And that solid columns up to six feet in height, maybe up to 24 inches in width. Again, just going back through the pictures. Some of these may be more than six feet, to your point. But consistent with these style of fencing is what we've gotten from the community on permit requests and feedback. We do have this scheduled for a public hearing on April 11th and first reading. Since it is an amendment to the zoning code, it does require a public hearing. Have an additional piece that does not require a public hearing for the building code at that 50% repair level. And then, of course, second reading to follow. Any questions?
So going back to this, no, the one before that. Okay, so are these the only four that you are going to bring to us? Okay, so, are these the only four that you are going to bring to us?
Yes, that, that's what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended.
But there's a significant change on where the, where the front line is.
Right.
Based on the setback.
Correct.
That's a significant change.
And so I think, um, in some examples, some of those larger lots, um, that alone would help mitigate a lot of those problems. Not all, uh, it certainly doesn't. Some of the residential properties that front are thoroughfares or collectors, are gonna have a different sound level than what you would typically have in a neighborhood, so.
So if we, we use Mrs. Marsh's, Mrs. Marsh, is that your name, is that correct?
Mrs.
Mrs., okay. If we used this example, and we had these changes, should we go in for a permit, we need to make sure we know where the setbacks and the property lines are. So you get a permit for a hundred dollars, and then the fence location is identified and can be constructed to the specifications that, that you're wanting without having any kind of waiver, variance, or going through any other additional process. That's, that's what it would look like if this passed.
So from the front property line, they would have to be twenty-five feet back.
Twenty-five feet back.
They could do the four-foot or six-foot fence, the side fence would also be allowed. Anything in front of that twenty-five would go back to that.
Does that seem more reasonable to, to, to you? And do, and do you understand the reason for the fence permit needing to be, um, obtained?
Yes, I understand for the permit, and, and I agree that, yeah, disagreements between property owners on property lines is, is a hassle. I've kind of done that before. And I think the twenty-five feet makes sense. I would just have to look at my survey and see where twenty-five feet hits on ours. But, and hopefully, that would take care of the Harper Road problem. But, you know, once again, it's just, we are, we are not, Harper Road is, has some neighborhoods, and they have their own roads, but then there are a lot of people that are actually on Harper Road. So.
All right, anything else, counsel? Or we feel like we're making headway here in some common sense changes?
Is this gonna be citywide?
Yes.
All right. So, for, I'm still trying to, can you go to the next slide? I think that's where you had all the. Okay, so all we're changing is the fencing requirements, regulations on the front side of the property?
That's correct.
So on the sides and on the back of the property, all that staying the same with the, was it thirty, thirty-two inches?
Once you're behind the front edge of the house, you can go up to six, seven, eight feet tall.
So that's what I was trying to clarify at the beginning, because the, the definition of the fence in our, when, when we started, and I was trying to clarify what the definition of the fence was. It doesn't say from the front of the property to the, to the.
It requires ornamental fencing from the front wall forward, if it's over thirty inches. It does not require ornamental fencing on the rear. But we'll look at that, make sure that's clear.
Right, no, no, I'm not talking about ornamental fencing. I'm sorry, I guess, so if there's a.
There are no height or material requirements from the front edge of the house to the back of the property. There are no requirements, other than you're required to get a permit. There's no restriction on height or per, or materials.
Right, if it's higher than the, was it two and a half feet, then you have to get the permit, right?
Correct.
No.
No, you have to get a fence permit if you're doing anything with a fence. If it's in front of your house right now, it's thirty-six inches. But we're trying to adjust and accommodate for other, other things that hadn't been considered. You always have to get a fence permit, but, but the front was the new part. The front was the new part that was put into, into the code. So now, that's the part that's being adjusted, but the permit for the fence is, is remaining.
Still the same.
No, that's, that's not accurate, because the definition of the fence is on any part of the property. They didn't define it as just the front part of it. That's what I'm trying to understand, when we're making this change, we're leaving everything else about the rest of the fences on the side and on the back of the property. All we're doing is changing the front part, right? So I'm trying to get that established first. Okay, so, 'cause the code did not mention anything about the front. I read it right now, um, twenty-six to thirty-eight, so.
Chapter twenty-six is only for permitting.
Right, right, no, I understand.
Over thirty inches, you're required to get a permit.
Right.
The zoning code in chapter sixty specifies from the front wall of the house forward, if it's over thirty, it must be ornamental.
Right, no, 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 I get that. I get that part.
From the, anything behind the front wall of the house, there are no requirements for materials.
Right, no, I wasn't talking about materials, just talking about the height portion of this. So, okay. If I could just be allowed my time, because I think all this interjection's getting a lot of it more confused. Okay, so we got that established, thank you, we're, I think we're on the same page there. The twenty-five-feet, um, setback, is that gonna be, that's everywhere. You said, I think you also mentioned fifteen.
It would be subject to which zoning district you're in.
Okay, so can you remind me, fifteen is in the?
R2.
Two?
R1, R1A is twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five, okay.
Okay, good?
I think so, I think that answers my questions. I'll just need to see the ordinance when we got it.
All right.
Last thing I'd like to say is, when we have agenda items like this, 'cause I see this when I get my packet, and it just says zoning code amendment regarding fencing requirements. And I have no idea what we're coming to discuss. If we could just have, I mean, we have agenda bills with the regular, um, meeting agenda packet. If we could have something that tells us what we're gonna be discussing a little bit more in detail, so I know what to come and prepare for. Otherwise, this presentation obviously is brand-new to us, which I like being able to see here, but I, I, I have no idea what I'm coming to a meeting for. And so I would like to be able to come fully prepared, um, with either questions that I can ask to you beforehand, before I have to come to this meeting, and then all this other confusion happens. So we can have some more information before, especially for workshops, that would be helpful to me, so.
With all due respect to me, a workshop is where you learn the information the first time. And then you, and then we, then we digest it, ask questions, and then we're presented for first and second reading. And that's the purpose of having a workshop. So I, I'm satisfied personally with the way that we've always done workshops.
I just think it could help us prepare more, that's all.
But we'll have that chance, when we get all of this, we'll have the details when it comes to us before. So, thank you, Drew, we'll look forward to having it and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We'll get you guys a draft, uh, ordinance based off your feedback today, uh, ten days in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do not believe we have anything for executive session, so at, anybody have anything, uh, else right now? At five fifty-seven, we will close the workshop, and we have, we'll take a ten-minute break.
Mayor, I need to come up to my office either house.